Good evening. We are here for a joint workshop of the Lewiston Planning Board, Lewiston Finance Committee. We're going to get a presentation on the 2019 LCIP. Ed and Heather.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Finance Committee and Planning Board. I'd like to especially welcome some new faces and some old faces who are returning. We know we're starting the new council year a little late. Usually the first meeting is earlier in January, but because of the inauguration was pushed back. So we thought to get you into the regular routine of business, we start with something very simple.[42.92][42.92](Laughter). Which is the proposed fiscal year 2019 capital improvement plan. Every year we update this plan. It's a five-year plan. And the purpose of it is to really ensure that policymakers are aware of both the city's current and future capital needs and to allow them to take those into consideration as we get into the annual budget process. So basically tonight, this is a presentation of a plan. It is not a proposal to actually spend money. That comes later, once we've gotten into the budget process. So this is the plan. The actual funding of any plan would come at the end of the annual budget process in -- do you schedule it for April this year or is it still in May?
It's still in May.
In May.[91.42][91.42](Laughter). Oops. Pushed the wrong button. There we go. So starting with the big picture, over the five years, we're anticipating $157 million of projects, of which $130 million would be from city resources. I don't anticipate that all of those projects will actually be funded. That's one of the purposes of the annual review as we go through the budget process to decide what we can and what we can't really handle. This is a little bit more of a breakdown. It shows the kinds of funding or where the funding is going. The biggest ones are the city bond issues, which for next year, for the coming year would be $13 million, and over five years, almost $62.5 million or so. Schools, for the coming year, $2 million, and over the period, about $12 million. And utilities, which is again, $7.2 million, excuse me, $2.7 million, no, $7.2, I had it right, first year, and considerably more than that over the time period. Some of the things that are different, if you look at the proposed bond issues by year, there's some major factors that influence this for fiscal year 19, the coming year. There's about a $1.4 million increase in school bonds requested, primarily for renovations to various school facilities. Another $3.3 million is included on the city side for the first of our fire substation replacement projects. And utilities for the first year are up about $600,000 over what they've been in the past due to the beginning process of stage one of the Jepson-Brook channel upgrade, where we are running into some capacity issues to try to handle stormwater flows and wet weather conditions. Over the five-year impacts, there are a couple of other things that have a significant impact. In fiscal year '20, the plan includes the Lincoln Street Garage expansion at about $10.5 million, Bird Street reconstruction at about $825,000, and the Canal Street project at about $800,000, which is designed to reduce lane width, or reduce the number of lanes and improve the green space between Canal Street and the actual canal. The other year that's a little outsized is fiscal year '23. That is largely an increase on the utility side, where there's a $10 million storage tank, CSO storage tank planned. We're down by the wastewater treatment plant. That's part of our long-term effort to try to control combined sewer overflows going into the river and other streams. And Dave is hopeful when we get there, we may not need it, but it's in the plan now, just in case. It's something we do have to go forward with. That year also has $6 million included for the visual and performing arts at Lewiston High School. I think you're all aware that the school is now doing a plan to take a look at a performing arts center, and they are anticipating potentially actually funding that in the fifth year of this plan. One of the other things that you have to take into account as you look at this plan is the overall fiscal and economic climate that the city is operating in. We are still coming out of, or still having some carryover effects of the recession in that capital funding finance for our operating budget was pretty much eliminated during the recession. We've made some efforts to try to put some of it back in the operating budget, particularly recurring things like street maintenance and equipment replacement. But that was kind of torpedoed when we saw revenue sharing dramatically reduced at the state level in 2014, I think it was, where today we're getting about $4 million less from the state on an annual basis than we should be under the traditional formula. So we're still seeing, of course, pressures on our operating budget. I think everybody's aware of that. We're still concerned going forward about what we might see with future state and federal funding. But at some point, it would be really helpful, I think, financially and fiscally for us to continue to try to find ways to fund what I call recurring capital expenses in our operating budget as opposed to in the capital budget, where you not only have the expense of the project, you have the interest expense associated with it going forward. Do you want to talk a little bit about our overall debt posture? And I think I may skip this slide. Thank you, Heather. Nope, I didn't. I'll go over to this one. One of the things that we've done, and the council's been very strong on driving over the last eight to 10 years, has been trying to get a handle on the city's overall debt. This is our current outstanding debt. As you can see, on the city side, it's about $42 million. The next, or the biggest, is the school side at $83 million. But I want to footnote that by pointing that almost $58 million of that is being paid for by the state and is associated with new school construction. So that's money that's being supported by the state of Maine, not necessarily by our budget. And then you can see our utilities, which have been increasing somewhat in debt load over the years in order for us to meet the Clean Water Act requirements, federal and state requirements, on our sewer and water side. The authorized unissued debt, that reflects debt that's been authorized in the past but hasn't been issued yet. There's usually about a year's lag between the authorization of debt and the time it's actually issued. We do that to make sure that the project can be done within the spend-down period required by the federal government, the Internal Revenue Service, so that we don't get penalized for not spending the money quickly enough. Oops. I keep pushing the wrong buttons. I'm going to have to put Heather in charge. What you can see, what you can see now on this chart is what, how we're going to be spending money over the five years. I guess now I'm really getting myself confused. Basically, it shows the amount we're talking about spending in each of the five-year period by category. As you can see, 2020 shows a pretty big bump in the general fund side. That's largely reflective of the Lincoln Street Garage. Then you can see that there's a significant bump in 2023 on the stormwater side, and stormwater, water, stormwater sewer and school side because of the CSO project and also because of the new project at the high school. During this year, the 2018 operating budget debt service represents 17.8% of the city's operating total budget, the city side budget. That looks pretty significantly high, but that's about five percentage points lower than it was in 2010 or so. School side, it's about six and a half. So overall, we're at about 10.8%. Bond rating agencies feel that that is, they recognize that the city has a debt issue, but they believe that that is moderate and handleable. It's been a result of trying to work down the amount of debt that we've had over the last few years. You get a better picture of that if you look at outstanding general fund debt. This is just on the municipal side of the debt ledger. And you can see between fiscal year 2005, which was the peak period, where we were up over $100 million in the general fund. We've brought that down to $42 million or so today. And we've done that in a variety of ways. I would point out that a lot of credit for that goes to prior councils, who really kind of led the charge to get a handle on our overall debt, to Heather, who's been a genius at handling the city's bonding and financing. So it's been very, a real group effort to try to bring that debt issue down. We've done this in a number of ways. A number of years ago, the city council authorized our debt limit, changed our authorized debt limit to 80% of the amount of principal paid off over the last three years on average. So we take the last three years' principal payment, average it, and then take 80% of that, and that is our target for issuing or authorizing debt for the coming year. That has the effect, obviously, of continuing to try to bring our debt level down. Refinancing debt when possible. We have virtually, I think we've refinanced everything. As the interest rate environment improved, we've done an awful lot of that. That is going to be much harder in the future as interest rates change and depending on what the federal government does with municipal debt going forward. As I mentioned before, we've tried to move recurring expenditures in the operating budget. We had a little bit of success at that when we first came out of the recession, but then state funding kind of pushed us back, where things like street paving and equipment replacement went back into the capital fund for bond coverage. We've also used unallocated fund balance to try to do a lot of our capital stuff. This is after we meet our requirement. We have a basic policy that says our unallocated fund balance should be between 8% and 12% of the overall revenues that we receive. In recent years, the council has kind of looked at 10% as where we should end up, and that has frequently resulted in our ability to cover some capital items by use of undesignated fund balance. We also, at one point, used undesignated fund balance to pay off the Coliseum debt, which carried a higher interest rate because it was taxable. That also helped bring our overall debt burden down. One of the things, though, you should also keep in mind is as our debt burden comes down, that doesn't necessarily mean that our annual principal and interest payments are going to decrease dramatically. One of the other things we've been trying to do as we've been trying to handle our debt is shorten the time period over which we repay that debt. I think back in 2010, the average was around 12, 15 years? Was around 15 years. We've now brought that down to seven?
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half. By paying off our debt quicker, number one, debt doesn't continue after asset life. I mean, you don't really want to be paying off a vehicle that you're not using anymore, or some kind of other investment you're not using. So we've been very careful to ensure that we pay off anything before its end of life appears. Second, it also decreases the amount of interest you have to pay, which means that you're eliminating, again, some additional cost. But this shows, again, what we're looking at now if we issued no further debt. So if we stopped issuing debt and didn't issue any debt between now and fiscal '23, which obviously is not likely, you would see about a 50%, roughly 40% reduction in our annual debt service payment. The authorization limit, this is how we compute it. We take the combined city-school debt less the debt associated with the state for the new schools. That QZAB group, that's some kind of special debt that was issued for one of the school projects, and Heather can explain that if anybody wants to understand it. And then a little bit, little bit that's left on the Coliseum. So we basically take the amount of principal that we've paid off in each of the last three years, add them together, divide by three, and multiply by .8. That gives us a local debt, our debt limitation, which for the coming year would be a little over $7 million. The LCIP plan requests, as you can see, are significantly over that, at $15 million. So at the moment, the plan calls for us to spend $8 million more than what's in the authorization limit. I will point out that, A, it is not unusual for us to start the capital planning process where we have more bond requests than we will eventually authorize. I can guarantee we will not authorize $15 million worth of bonds in the coming year. It'll be a smaller number. But I'll also point out that that gap is somewhat bigger than it's been in previous years, driven by some of those things I mentioned earlier, particularly the need to start replacing the fire substations at $3.3 million. That eats up on its own almost half of our authorized limit, the additional funding that the school department has requested, plus the other projects. So basically, I think it's going to be a little bit more challenging this year to try to prioritize projects and come up with those that we feel really must be funded versus those that we may be able to defer or hopefully find other ways to fund. Again, just a quick summary. $15 million requested, $7 million is the limit, so we have an $8 million gap. I want to spend a few minutes and talk about some of the particular projects, particularly those in the first year, because that's normally the year that we focus our attention on. So if you look at this, this chart basically gives the area of the organization that's requesting funding, total cost, and what comes from city resources. On the airport, the biggest single project is some equipment that they need to replace that is necessary for them to maintain the airfield. At about $200,000, plus they need to replace a hangar door at about $150,000. Emergency 911, at the amount that they're requesting for the coming year is to replace the radio consoles at the 911 center. Those consoles are getting close to 25 years old and are beyond their service life, so they need to be replaced. I will point out, however, that that is just one more step in a multi-year plan that the 911 folks are working on to replace and upgrade our entire radio system, and that in the second year of the plan, you're looking at something in the range of $3 million that's been requested to replace all of the, all of the actual radio equipment itself, the frequencies and all of those kinds of things. That's a project that we'll be talking about more during this process, and it's a joint project with Auburn, and I know it's going to be a subject of some meetings with Auburn and the Auburn City Council to discuss that. See Museum LA on here. That is really just a placeholder to get them in front of everyone. I anticipate within the next couple of months that representatives of Museum LA will be coming to the council to present their master plan and to talk about their capital plan going forward as they try to move into their new facility down on the riverfront. So that's there, just to keep it in mind as we move forward. There'll be more detail on that coming forward. Transit committee is pretty much bus replacement and bus refurbishing. We've had a lot of trouble with our bus system. We've had to buy a lot of used buses, and we are now adopting a process where some of our standard buses will go through a midlife refurbishment so that we can extend their life expectancy. Assessing is suggesting, and we've talked about this a little bit in the past with the prior council, that we begin the process of looking toward a revaluation. We talked about that this last year. The decision was made not to go forward with it at this time, but it's something that at some point within the near future would be something we're going to have to seriously consider. Economic and community development. The big projects there are $150,000 for the canal system, the beginning of the work we're going to have to do on the canal system once we take ownership. We anticipate that we will actually be in a position to take ownership literally within a few months. Brookfield has been working with FERC. They are kind of checking off the last few boxes that they have to do to allow them to transfer the canals, and then we'd have to go through the actual closing process. But I anticipate that that will be done, hopefully, within the next two to three months. It will be in a position later on this spring to get the Bird Street Bridge replacement, Beach Street, I always want to call it Beach Street, Bird Street. Beach Street Bridge into, into work, to get it done. Other things that are in there, there's $320,000 to allow us to continue work on the Riverfront Island Master Plan, and about $732,000 for the initial steps in the Lincoln Street Garage expansion. I will point out that that garage expansion is, of course, related to and subject to the Bates Mill 5 project going forward. The option on Bates Mill 5 runs out in February. We will likely have a workshop with the council, I was thinking, the last Tuesday of this month, to start talking about the specifics of the development agreement and the financial plan for that facility. So I think we're getting closer to the point of knowing where that project is, and we'll be back, coming back to it in more detail, hopefully, at the end of the month. MIS is replacing the Microsoft Office. You know, you have to love software, because whenever you get all your software finally up to date, they say you can't have it anymore and you have to buy new stuff. Well, that's basically the position that we're in. We have to upgrade our Microsoft Office and Exchange systems. The police department, small request for their conference room. Police department has a generation minus one version of a conference, teleconferencing system that doesn't work at all, and it's, it really needs to, they need some upgrading in order to take advantage of some of the training opportunities that they have. Fire station replacement at 3.3 million, I've mentioned. Fire department also has a request to replace their quint. The quint is the combined aerial and pumper that they have that's stationed on Lisbon Street. It is end of life. I think it's approaching 20-some years of operation and needs to be replaced. Fire equipment is exceptionally expensive. That's almost $1 million just to replace that one piece of equipment. Public Works Buildings, there's a lot of relatively small projects there. The biggest one is the Canal Street Garage structural rehabilitation. That garage is getting a little bit old, so we have to continue to maintain it. That's about $230,000 of the amount shown there. The others tend to be smaller projects, smaller renovation projects. On the combined sewer overflow, $2 million of what you see there is related to the Gullybrook Storage Tank. That's, again, a CSO combined overflow storage tank that's going to be put in Franklin pasture, just above where Hudson Bus used to be. It'll be right along the bank there in a way to capture stormwater. On highway, the big items here are streets for 2.7 million. That's about the same level we have funding we had last year. We've also included a request for $300,000, again, for sidewalks. That would be the second year we've actually had an appropriation for sidewalks. There's $100,000 included for crosswalk, the crosswalk plan and implementation that we've been talking about. This is, I think, the Finance Committee awarded the contract last night to have a consulting firm assist us identifying priority crosswalk areas that need to be looked at for pedestrian safety, as well as areas where we might need to look at adding a crosswalk where there's a demand. So that study has now been authorized by the Finance Committee. It'll be going forward. And then there's $100,000 for Bird Street rehabilitation. There are some main Department of Transportation projects that will help us with our paving next year. One is a continuation of the Lincoln Street River Road reconstruction going out toward Plourd Parkway. There is also the first phase of some of the work we need to do on East Avenue from Home Field to Fair Lawn. That's a couple of blocks on either side of Savannah Street. That's about a $500,000 project. The garage is basically our typical equipment replacement program. Open spaces, $450,000 for continuing to implement the Kennedy Park Master Plan, and $150,000 for the Marcot Playground. Finance Committee, again, last night awarded a bid for a lot of the equipment for that playground, so that project is moving forward. We'll be doing, we've got plans going in for some of the site work that will be done this summer. So I think we're starting to see that project come to completion, but we don't have quite enough to finish it yet. On solid waste, that's two projects, scale replacement at $1.5 million, and landfill intermediate cover, which is something we have to do periodically to meet our permit. School department, again, a little over $2 million, primarily for a variety of relatively small upgrades and renovation projects. And I won't bother going through them all. They're included in the detail in the book. On water, it's pretty much a traditional water bond issue, that everything's about the same as it has been in the past. The biggest single thing is line rehabilitation replacement at about $2 million. Sewer, again, is very similar to what we've done in past years, with the majority of the money going into main rehabilitation and inspection and rehabilitation of lines. And stormwater is a little bit higher, primarily because of the Jepson-Brook project at $600,000. Calendar going forward, February 6th, we'll have the public hearing. February 15th is when the Finance Committee and the Planning Board will be submitting their recommendations for the city council packet. We've also had some discussion, and we will be sure that those recommendations not only go to the committee then, before the plan is adopted, but are also come forward at the time the city actually considers the actual funding of these projects. Because normally what you'll see when the LCIP is adopted, the actual funding ends up being different than what's in the plan, because you have to make some of those compromises of what you can afford, what you can't afford, those kinds of things. So on February 20th, the plan would be adopted, and March 1st is the deadline by charter to do that. So that's pretty much an overview of the whole process. Hope I didn't take too long, and I'd be glad to answer any questions or respond to any comments.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Lechance?
Thank you. Thank you, Ed, for that presentation. Going back to the fiscal year principal and interest payment that you had, and also the previous proposed bond issue schedule from 2019 to 2023, a couple of questions I had for illustrative purposes. On the P&I payment schedule you have from FY '18 to FY '23, you've got it 877-754. What I would ask would be, what about the calculation, assuming debt issued at annual debt limits through those years? For example, the proposed bond issue forecast from FY '19 to '23, those bonded typically at 80%, those bonded limits added to that P&I payment schedule through FY '23. I would like to see something that illustrates a forecast, assuming we met the 80% or exceeded it slightly, as we historically have done through those years, to see where our total debt payments are going to be in the next five years.
Go ahead, Heather.
Mr. Lechance, on page 131 of the LCIP. It's probably closer to what you're looking for. It does not take into consideration the 80% debt limit, but it does forecast bonding, everything that's unissued right now, authorized, unissued, and it takes into consideration the bonding pattern based upon the projects that are requested in this plan, and when we, assuming they were all approved, and when we would normally bond those.
So with that, what I understand, you've said that we would exceed, assuming this year's FY, or this year's LCIP was approved as presented, it would exceed the bonding limit by 100 and something percent. Is that what you're doing on this page?
That's correct. It's assuming worst-case scenario.
Okay. So we typically wouldn't see that amount of bonding, but this is a worst-case for?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Reed?
I have a couple of questions on the reassessment, obviously.
Yes.
First, how is it we consider this a capital improvement if it's something we're going to undertake in one year and have someone do for us?
Well, it may not come, it may not be bonded, but we consider any kind of special project like that to be a capital project.
And, and the second part's a little bit more complex. When we had this discussion last year with the potential merger of the two cities, we talked about the $50 average for 11,682 properties, which is 580,000. So it's a little higher than what you bonded. But I don't notice in that bond where we've talked about any of the costs to update the software, to do the conversions for that. Are we going to pay cash for that within the budget?
I suspect that Bill has included some of that in the total, because he's budgeted over four years.
But I added the totals that came to far less than what we've talked about previously as a cost. And the other part to this is, is that those conversations last fall also had some discussion about a possible utility venture coming to be in Lewiston, that if it came online, we could use that funding to take care of this and not have to do the bonding. I'm wondering what the status of that is as well.
Well, we're still waiting to hear what the decision is going to be coming out of Massachusetts, because it's basically, CMP has proposed a clean- Massachusetts because it's basically CMP has proposed a clean power plan to meet Massachusetts' requirements that would result in the significant 100 million dollar plus investment in Lewiston. And that, as I recall, should be awarded in February?
Actually January 28th.
January 28th? So we should hear then. So I don't think we're locked into having to start the, the revaluation at any particular point other than keep in mind at some point in the future, we're going to have to do it. And our estimate was about $500,000 as I recall.
I think we're around 550, so.
And this is, I think he's got 115,000 for five years in there, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Dan?
Just a piece of bookkeeping, page 70. I don't think that Main Street goes to Lisbon Street or the Bird Lounge Bridge. I think that's actually Cedar Street. Is that right Dave? MDOT, MDOT 4 on page 70. I don't believe that's Main Street. I think it's Cedar Street.
The project, the project name correct? It's the title, it's a project title.
The title is incorrect. It says Main Street.
It includes part of Cedar Street.
I believe that Cedar Street is that.
It should be.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, yeah. Just a piece of bookkeeping so everybody knows which street we're talking about because there is other work on Main Street included. Page, I guess it's page 76 in the Kennedy Park. $73,000 for shrubs. Seems like, you know, a lot of shrubs, a small portion of the park.
That's 35,000.
That's 35,000.
That's the total for the plant.
I think that when you look at it though, on page 76, I think that when you add the plantings and the ornamentals, I believe that's 73,000.
500.
Just seems like a lot for that area. I think the whole thing for the park seems like a lot considering some of the use of the park. And then Heather, if you could just in three minutes explain what in the world QZAB is on page 130? Or six minutes or whatever you.
Technically it's called QZAB. And what that was, there was a financing mechanism and this goes back to when Dick was here, probably in shortly after maybe 2002, thereabout, maybe even in the late 1990s. There was special financing related to school construction projects that provided tax relief to private place financing with certain institutes for bonding purposes. So there were area banks like Andersgagen Bank and, and some of those that we negotiated private placements to do school construction projects during that time. Those are unfortunately or fortunately 20-year projects, so you still see the life of those, but the interest is significantly less than what we would do on the open market right now because of that financing deal. Those are no longer available under IRS code right now.
So it was money that was spent actually for school construction or school renovation?
Yes. And they're stripped out separately rather than included in the school above because of their special financing.
Okay. And the money that was attributed to the Coliseum, the 87 and then it goes to 105, that's still paying off the remainder of the debt?
That is the non-taxable portion of the debt, the remainder. You're correct.
Okay. I don't know what I got for the moment.
Anyone else? Mr. Reed?
Just a quick question on the Connor School, and I don't know if you'll know this yet, but is that in fact 100% funded from the state as people like to claim or will there be a local share because of changes that have been made?
There is a local share with changes made.
And do we know how much that is?
The percentage is, it's either 84.6 or 86.4% funded by the state. I can double check that and get back to you.
Wow.
A couple of things to keep in mind when you're thinking about that. The, the voters did approve 2.1 million in local bonds for air conditioning, the fields.
And expanding the gym.
Expanding the gym. Secondly, the original amounts that were talked about, the original bid or the original total came in significantly less due to the bids. So that's why that 80 some percent number may seem higher than what was talked about originally because the bids came in 5 million or so.
7.7.
7.7 million less than estimate. Anyone on the council? Okay, thank you very much. Counselor Lys, motion?
Yes. Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Item number one, adoption of the rules to govern the city council for the ensuing council year. Requested action: to adopt the rules to govern the city council for the period of January 9th, 2018 to January 7th, 2020 as presented.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilor Cludier, seconded by Councilor Lyson. Comments? To the public? Counsel? Call the roll.
Counsel from word one.
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Item number two.
Item number two: public hearing on the renewal application for a special amusement permit for live entertainment for the Fraternal Order of Eagles, 1327 Sabata Street.
Okay, sec.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Markcott, seconded by Councilor Cludier. Any discussion? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Counsel from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Just a note, councilors, let's try to let the city clerk finish the requested action. I know we're all a little nervous and jumpy first time, so. Item number three.
Item number three: resolve ratifying the appointments of Mark Hayer and Alicia Ray to the Lewiston School Committee. Requested action: to approve the resolve ratifying the appointments of Mark Hayer and Alicia Ray to the Lewiston School Committee.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion by Councilor Cludier, seconded by Councilor Lyson. Comments? To the public? Counsel? Call the roll.
Counsel from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Just a note, councilors, let's try to let the city clerk finish the requested action. I know we're all a little nervous and jumpy first time, so. Item number three.
Item number three: resolve ratifying the appointments of Mark Hayer and Alicia Ray to the Lewiston School Committee. Requested action: to approve the resolve ratifying the appointments of Mark Hayer and Alicia Ray to the Lewiston School Committee.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion by Councilor Cludier, seconded by Councilor Lyson. Any discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Counsel from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Just a note, councilors, let's try to let the city clerk finish the requested action. I know we're all a little nervous and jumpy first time, so. Item number three.
Item number three: resolve ratifying the appointments of Mark Hayer and Alicia Ray to the Lewiston School Committee. Requested action: to approve the resolve ratifying the appointments of Mark Hayer and Alicia Ray to the Lewiston School Committee.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion by Councilor Cludier, seconded by Councilor Lyson. Any discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Counsel from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Item number four.
Item number four: authorization for the city clerk and/or deputy city clerk to approve and sign all applications to operate beano, bingo, and other games of chance on behalf of the municipal officers. Requested action: order that the city council hereby authorizes the city clerk and/or deputy city clerk to approve and sign all applications to operate beano, bingo, and other games of chance on behalf of the municipal officers during the period January 9th, 2018 through January 7th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Lyson, seconded by Councilor Ray. Any discussion at the council?
Got it.
To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Counsel from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Number five.
Item number five: authorization for the city clerk and/or deputy city clerk to approve and sign all permits for circuses and carnivals on behalf of the municipal officers. Requested action: approve that the city council hereby authorizes the city clerk and/or deputy city clerk to approve and sign all permits for a circus or carnival on behalf of the municipal officers during the period January 9th, 2018 through January 7th, 2020.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilor Cludier, seconded by Councilor Beam. Any discussion? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Counsel from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Just a note, councilors, let's try to let the city clerk finish the requested action. I know we're all a little nervous and jumpy first time, so. Item number three.
Item number three: resolve ratifying the appointments of Mark Hayer and Alicia Ray to the Lewiston School Committee. Requested action: to approve the resolve ratifying the appointments of Mark Hayer and Alicia Ray to the Lewiston School Committee.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion by Councilor Cludier, seconded by Councilor Lyson. Any discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Counsel from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Just a note, councilors, let's try to let the city clerk finish the requested action. I know we're all a little nervous and jumpy first time, so. Item number three.
Item number three: resolve ratifying the appointments of Mark Hayer and Alicia Ray to the Lewiston School Committee. Requested action: to approve the resolve ratifying the appointments of Mark Hayer and Alicia Ray to the Lewiston School Committee.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion by Councilor Cludier, seconded by Councilor Lyson. Any discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Counsel from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Item number four.
Item number four: authorization for the city clerk and/or deputy city clerk to approve and sign all applications to operate beano, bingo, and other games of chance on behalf of the municipal officers. Requested action: order that the city council hereby authorizes the city clerk and/or deputy city clerk to approve and sign all applications to operate beano, bingo, and other games of chance on behalf of the municipal officers during the period January 9th, 2018 through January 7th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Lyson, seconded by Councilor Ray. Any discussion at the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Counsel from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Item number four.
Item number four: authorization for the city clerk and/or deputy city clerk to approve and sign all applications to operate beano, bingo, and other games of chance on behalf of the municipal officers. Requested action: approve that the city council hereby authorizes the city clerk and/or deputy city clerk to approve and sign all applications to operate beano, bingo, and other games of chance on behalf of the municipal officers during the period January 9th, 2018 through January 7th, 2020.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilor Cludier, seconded by Councilor Pettingill. Counselor Lyson?
Kathy, looking at the information provided, renewals do not need council action, but new applications do, is that correct?
Correct. It's state law that any time there's a new application for a new liquor license, a public hearing must be held to allow opportunity for the abutters to comment regarding any impacts, but renewals do not require a public hearing. Public hearings can be held optionally, counselor, at the request of the council. So typically what will happen is the deputy city clerk will notify the group, I think, about a month or two prior to the renewals, and should there be any concerns regarding any of those establishments, at any time, the council has the right to say, "We would like to hold a public hearing on the establishment business X prior to the renewal of their liquor license."
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? To the public? Call the roll.
Counsel from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Item number seven.
Item number seven: authorization for the city clerk and/or deputy city clerk to approve and sign all applications for utility pole permits on behalf of the municipal officers. Requested action: order that the city council hereby authorizes the city clerk and/or deputy city clerk to approve and sign all applications for utility pole permits on behalf of the municipal officers during the period January 9th, 2018 through January 7th, 2020.
So moved. Second. Have a motion by Councilor Lyson, seconded by Councilor LaJoy. Comments? To the public? Call the roll.
Counsel from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Item number eight.
Item number eight: authorization for the city clerk and/or deputy city clerk to approve and sign all licenses for closeout sale permits on behalf of the municipal officers. Requested action: order that the city council hereby authorizes the city clerk and/or deputy city clerk to approve and sign all licenses for closeout sale permits on behalf of the municipal officers during the period January 9th, 2018 through January 7th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilor Ray, seconded by Councilor Pettingill. Any discussion at the council? Public? Call the roll.
Counsel from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Item number nine.
Item number nine: authorization for the finance director, tax collector, and deputy treasurer to act on behalf of the municipal officers regarding deeds, liens, and municipal investments. Requested action: order that the city council hereby authorizes the finance director, tax collector, or deputy treasurer to withhold monies payable by the city of Lewiston to cover taxes due pursuant to main revised statutes annotated Title 30A, Section 905, to sign on behalf of the city the necessary deeds and liens and tax settlements, and to invest funds in accordance with the main revised statutes annotated Title 30A, Section 5706 during the period January 9th, 2018 through January 7th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Markcott, seconded by Councilor Pettingill. Any discussion on the council? Public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Counsel from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Item number ten.
Item number ten: authorization for city administration to approve or deny all requests to hang banners, post-community event signs on municipal property, and place temporary signs, flags, and decorations in the public right-of-way on behalf of the municipal officers. Order that the city council hereby authorizes the city administrator or deputy city administrator to review and approve or deny all requests to hang banners, post-community event signs on city property, and place temporary signs, flags, and decorations in the public right-of-way on behalf of the municipal officers during the period January 9th, 2018 through January 7th, 2020.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion by Councilor Cludier, seconded by Councilor LaJoy. Any discussion? To the public? Counsel? Call the roll.
Counsel from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Item number eleven.
Item number eleven: authorization for deputy city administrator and/or finance director to have signatory authority for the city administrator when the administrator is unavailable. Requested action: order that the city council hereby authorizes the deputy city administrator or in the absence of the deputy city administrator, the finance director, to have signatory authority for the city administrator when the administrator is unavailable during the period of January 9th, 2018 through January 7th, 2020.
So moved. Second. Motion by Councilor Lyson, seconded by Councilor Beam. Any discussion at the council? Public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Counsel from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
And word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Item number twelve.
Item number twelve: order authorizing the city administrator to execute a declaration of environmental covenant on the city-owned property located at 180 Bartlett Street. Requested action: to approve the order authorizing the city administrator to execute a declaration of environmental covenant on the city-owned property located at 180 Bartlett Street.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilor Cludier, seconded by Councilor Beam. I'll actually start if the city administrator can give us a brief background on the issue.
Sure, I think everybody's aware that there's a new elementary school that's being built next to the high school. The property on which that elementary school is being built was where the fields used to be for the high school. Those fields were funded in part originally by a grant from the federal government through the Land and Water Conservation Fund. One of the requirements of that grant is that open space that is supported by federal funding remain as open space in recreational use in perpetuity. In order for us to place the school there, we were therefore required by the federal government and the grant requirement to find replacement properties that would substitute for the value, both the economic value in terms of just market value and the recreational value of the property to be lost. There are a number of parcels that are fulfilling that. One is Drew and Field, which the school department purchased, and the second is Hudson Bus, which the city has purchased. Hudson Bus will be redeveloped into a field complex. That demolition work has been done, and the environmental work has been done. The property was already subject to a state voluntary remediation action plan, given the history of its use for maintaining buses and the presence of underground tanks. That plan prohibited the use for recreational purposes, so we went back as a part of this process and are amending, or in effect getting a new VRAP on the property. VRAP protects us against future environmental liability, and as part of that process, we're required to execute a declaration of environmental covenants that would run with the property and be filed at the Registry of Deeds. That has all been worked out between city staff, our attorney, and our environmental consultants, as well as the State Department of Environmental Protection.
Counsel? Counsel, yes.
So, Ed, basically they're allowing the use for recreational uses, but prohibiting some other uses without permission?
That's correct.
And we see that, you know, the use is intended to be recreational, right?
Yes, the use is intended to be recreational, has to stay recreational in order to serve as mitigation for the property that was lost from recreation due to the construction of the new elementary school.
Thank you. Anyone else? To the public? Back to the council? Counselor Pettingill?
I'm curious if it's worth noting to have the, I don't know how we would do it, but put it on the deed that this is happening because of the Federal Park Grant, because I know the reason we're kind of in this boat is everybody that worked for the city previously left, and then nobody knew that these lands were used for these purposes. So if we could put it on the deed, so then that way, 10, 15 years from now, we don't end up in the same boat.
Yeah, we have talked, yes, we have talked with our attorneys. I think we can file something on the deeds for all of the properties that would be going under Land and Water Conservation Fund restrictions, so that in the future it wouldn't be missed if property was looked at to be disposed of.
Right, thank you.
If I remember correctly, the federal government forgot about this as well.
The federal government didn't, but the state government is responsible for overseeing the program, and the state is required to audit the sites every five years, and here as we can tell, it'd been over 20 years since they had taken a look at any of the properties covered by the grant restrictions.
Excellent. Anyone else? Call the roll.
Counsel from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Item number 13.
Item number 13: amendment to the traffic schedule regarding a prohibition on winter parking for a portion of the odd-numbered side of Cludier Street. Requested action: to adopt the proposed amendments to the traffic Requested action, to adopt the proposed amendments to the traffic schedule for Clutier Street to prohibit parking on the odd-numbered side of the street.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilor Clutier, seconded by Councilor Pettingill. Any questions on the council? To the public? And back to the council? Call the roll.
Counsel from Ward One?
Yes.
Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number fourteen.
Item number fourteen, authorization to accept transfer of forfeiture funds. Requested action, that pursuant to Title Fifteen, Maine Revised Statutes Annotated, Section Fifty Eight Twenty Four Three, and Sub, and Section Fifty Eight Twenty Two Four A, the City Council hereby acknowledges and approves of the transfer of one thousand five hundred six dollars or any portion thereof, in the case of the state of Maine versus Tarek Vincent Rankins, the transfer of six hundred eighty-eight dollars or any portion thereof, in the case of the state of Maine versus Haja Haja, transfer of three thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars or any portion thereof, in the case of the state of Maine versus Rashim Johnson, and the transfer of ten thousand three hundred dollars or any portion thereof, and the proceeds from the sale of firearms and ammunition or any pro, or any portion thereof, in the case of the state of Maine versus Jennifer Dion, being funds forfeited pursuant to the court process, so that is further acknowledged that these funds shall be credited to the City of Lewiston Drug Enforcement Program account.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Ray, seconded by Councilor LaJoy. Being the first meeting for this council with this on the agenda, if the chief would be kind enough to give us a quick overview of forfeiture funds, how we take them, what they're used for, future reference.
We went over this a little bit on our little orientation. What it is, is we get a certain percentage, so I can't tell you right now, although the clerk has told you some numbers of ten thousand, three thousand, we get a certain percentage of that. If it's a case that is just investigated by the Lewiston Police Department, whatever the court orders, we will get, but if we work with the Maine Drug Enforcement Agency or any of the federal agencies, they get a, a certain percentage of it. Oftentimes, if it's with federal forfeiture funds, we get anywhere between seven to nine percent, but it's a lot of the time, it's, it's through the federal formula in terms of that funding. The money in from the, the forfeitures that we get, we can only use for specific items. There are certain guidelines that the state and the federal government have, but this is once somebody's been convicted, and it's the, the proceeds, usually if it's drugs, it's money that we've seized through those investigations. But I can't tell you right now, but this is the first step in the process of getting that money, but I can't tell you how much we'll get of all of this.
Questions for Chief O'Malley from the council?
So these are all drug forfeiture funds to? Yes. All of these here, even though they're not listed? And the court number is something if somebody wanted to research what, what that was about? That, that's the docket number over at, at the courts, yes. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, chief. To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Counsel from Ward One?
Yes.
Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number fifteen.
Item number fifteen, appointments to various city boards and committees. There are five items, despite how we numbered them in your book, five items for requested action. The first item is to receive the mayor's appointments to various city boards and committees. No city council action is required. The mayor has several appointments that he can make solely, and he has made those, and I'd be happy to read those, Mr. Mayor, or you can read them, either way.
You, you may.
Okay. So the mayor is making the following appointments, Assessment Review Board, three-year full terms, Gary Savard and Noel Mador, two-year term, filling a vacancy, Joel Mosher, Board of Appeals, full member position, five-year term, Leslie Dubois, Associate Member Positions, filling vacancies, Alexander Willette and Phyllis Rand, Finance Committee, three-year term, Michael LaChance, Historic Preservation Review Board, two full members, two full three-year terms, Gerard Raymond and Kevin Moran, to a one-year vacancy, Christopher Beam, and the Associate Member Position, Steve Dayton, L.A. Community Forestry Board, full member, Richard Shea, and full member, filling a vacancy, Dustin Carrier, and to the Planning Board, full member, five-year term, Benjamin Martin, Associate Member, filling a three-year term, Emily Darby, and Associate Member, filling a one-year vacancy, Lucy Bissin.
And there's no action on that?
Correct, there's no action. Those appointments are done solely by the mayor, and the mayor made those appointments the end of last week, but we'd just like to read those and for the record for the benefit of the public. The next item for requested action is to approve the mayor's nominations regarding his appointments to the Cable Television Committee and the Library Board of Trustees, and the City Council vote is required. At the bottom of that page, the next page, you will see Cable TV Committee, I believe, is that still on hold, Mr. Mayor? I'm not?
But we'll hold that for.
Okay. So we'll be bypassing the Cable TV Committee at this point, so the motion before the council would be to approve the mayor's nominations regarding his appointment to the Library Board of Trustees. The appointments to the Library Board of Trustees is done by the mayor's nomination, and council confirmation vote is required. The mayor is nominating for three full-member seats to three-year terms, Edward Walworth, Sarah Gillespie, and Julia Gordon, and for a full-member position for a one-year opening, filling a vacancy, I believe it's pronounced Sophia Khalid, I'm not really sure.
Khalid.
Khalid, thank you, Kristen Khalid, Sophia Khalid.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Lyson, seconded by Councilor Clutier. Any discussion on the council? The public? Call the roll.
Counsel from Ward One?
Yes.
Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
And word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero. The next item for requested action is number three, to review applications and to consider making appointments to the Airport Board of Directors and the Lake Auburn Watershed Commission. These appointments are one hundred percent done by the council, a mayor nomination is not required. You will see in your book the listing of folks who've applied for the Airport Committee as well as the Lake Auburn Watershed Committee, so maybe I'll look to the council president to make a motion, however you'd like to handle it.
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Rick LaChappelle for the Airport Board of Directors, and Joe Grube for the Lake Auburn Watershed Commission.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Clutier and a second, Councilor Markcott, to nominate Rick LaChappelle to the Airport Board of Directors and Joe Grube to Lake Auburn Watershed. Any discussion on the council? To the public? To the council?
One question. So should we vote on those separately, because it's two, appointments to two different?
You, you can if you'd like, sure, that's fine.
No, okay.
Yeah, you don't have to either, no? If it's not.